And open session at seven fifty-five P M. Are there any public comments? No public comments. Okay, we'll move on to licenses and permits. So we have an annual entertainment license for Hooper's Judge LLC. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are you good, Jack?
I am sorry.
Okay, we have a one-day entertainment license for the Cohasset pre-prom red carpet event on May twenty-third. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, we have the McBride Wedding Event, May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Kevin, do we have someone online? We have no one online, okay, for this. So, oh, you're here. Okay, come up, please. And your name and address.
I'm Emily McBride, one ninety-eight South Main Street.
Okay. So you're asking for use of the common for about an hour or so between the ceremony and the reception of the Red Lion Inn, is that correct?
That's correct.
And and the reason that we have an entertainment license is because there's going to be live music?
Yes, just mariachi band.
Mariachi band, okay. Open to the public?
You're all invited.
Okay. It's it's the Friday night of Memorial Day weekend or the Saturday?
It's the Sunday.
Oh, the Sunday, the Sunday, okay.
Twenty-fifth.
Okay, and which side of the common, as you look at the church, is it on the Dupont side or the other side?
Um, actually,
The other side, Tracy knows, okay, okay. So it's just for about an hour and then and then the wedding party and the guests will be trolleying or walking down to the Red Lion.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions?
Roughly, how many people are we talking about?
There's a hundred and thirteen guests, but they'll be, they may not all be on the common at the same time.
Well, they should be.
A hundred and thirteen plus the members of the select board, so that would be.
Yes, yes.
Do you have a rain plan if it rains?
I think we'll just move to the Red Lion, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, it's gonna be available.
The very young, she has big hats.
Oh. Okay, does anyone have any questions? No, so can I have a motion to approve a one-day entertainment license for the McBride Wedding Event on May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five?
Still moved, and I hope you have a fantastic day.
Thank you.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the, sorry, the Safe Harbor Candlelight Vigil Event, August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. It's use of the common and a one-day entertainment license. This is an annual event, I believe. Do we have anyone from Safe Harbor?
Hi, Nicole's here.
Okay. Hi, Nicole, thank you for your patience.
Of course, I believe Emily might be in the audience as well. But it's, like you said, it's every single year and entertainment is just us using the speakers and a microphone and some music throughout the vigil. It's a one-hour event.
Okay, speakers, microphone, and a little bit of music. Does anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Nope, can I have a motion to approve the one-day entertainment license for Safe Harbor, their candlelight vigil on August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five?
Don't move.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Nicole. And next up, we have three Friends of Holly Hill Farm events. We'll take them one at a time. And these are just the alcohol licenses? Yep.
Yes.
Hi, Meredith. Tracy, they're just alcohol, there's no entertainment licenses, right?
So, no, I'm sorry, just one, two, one-day liquor licenses, and then they have another event, which is a five K.
The five K, okay. Okay, so the first is a farm-to-table dinner on Saturday, July nineteenth, one-day wine and malt license from six to ten P M. You want to tell us a little bit about it?
Sure, it's our annual, one of our annual fundraisers, about seventy-five people at the farm for a farm-to-table dinner on that Saturday night in July.
Okay, great. Anybody have any questions? Nope, so can I have a motion to approve a one-day wine and malt license for Friends of Holly Hill Farm for their farm-to-table dinner, Saturday, July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next up is Friends of Holly Hill Farm Farm Fest, Saturday, September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. You tell us a little bit about this event?
Yep, this would be our fourth year doing this event and another fundraiser for the farm. This one, we do have a live auction and we have different local restaurants come and serve food, and we do serve beer and wine at the event as well, as well as have music, and that's, it's at the farm. We tend to have about two hundred people, and we do parking off-site at Sandy Beach, which we have asked about, and we run a shuttle up to the farm.
Okay. So there's live music, does that mean an entertainment license?
No.
Okay, is it required? Chris?
Oh, so, no, it's on their property.
It's on their property.
It's on their property, so no, okay, thank you. So do I have a motion to approve the Friends of Holly Hill Farm Farm Fest, Saturday, September twenty-seventh?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And last is Friends of Holly Hill Farm, the Holly Hill Five K Hustle Event, Saturday, October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five. This is your second annual?
Yes, the second time we've done it. Similar, we're starting to end at the at the farm, we do two laps, kind of going down towards the ocean, back up Nichols, back to the farm, do that twice for a five K. People do park off-site at Sandy Beach. We're hoping to get a shuttle for that this year. Last year it was small, I think we had about maybe seventy-five people, hoping to get closer to a hundred and fifty this year, so it's not not a big event, not too long, but a family-friendly fundraiser for us.
Thank you. Is Chief quickly on or no?
He's here.
Yep.
I, hi, Ian. Hi there, yep, this is a second year of this event. We may have to tweak the the traffic plan a little bit that's still unfolding, but Officer Lawrence is working with folks in the farm, and I anticipate no problems.
Okay, great, thank you. So can I have a motion to approve the Friends of Holly Hill Farm, Holly Hill Five K Hustle Event for Sunday, October nineteenth?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, thank you, thank you, Meredith, for, thank you, Meredith, for coming. Chief, thanks for your your comments.
No problem, thank you.
Sure. Next up is the Farmer's Market, which are scheduled for Thursday, starting June sixth through August twenty-eighth, four-thirty to seven-thirty P M., and then September fourth through September eighteenth, three to six P M., an entertainment license and use of the common. Is there anyone from, oh, Cassandra?
Hello.
Oh, hello. So this this is the Farmer's Market?
It's the revamped Farmer's Market, it's now going to be called the Cohasset Community Market.
Cohasset Community Market. Okay. But does it change materially the composition or the vendor structure or any of your operating details?
Nope, we're trying to keep it as close to the same as possible, other than the date and time changes.
Okay. Okay. Um, and the entertainment license would be for every one of those days, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Just one, why the name change?
Um, we weren't able to carry over the social media from the prior Farmer's Market, and we wanted to kind of make the people aware that we were going to be taking over and it wasn't going to be the same management team.
Okay.
What was the, what's the behind the scenes happening there? With the manager, the previous management, did they leave? Was there disputes or?
Yes, so the previous management was a private entity. They decided that they no longer wanted to manage the market.
Fine, thank you.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the Cohasset Community Market as outlined on the agenda, days and times?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's the entertainment license and the use of the common. Thank you, Cassandra.
Thank you, have a nice night.
Have a nice night.
I'm sorry, briefly, I got that staff stepped up when the folks just weren't able to continue it, so this has been a really great pass on a torch. The Hingham folks have assisted, and we really love community supports. If anyone who's interested in joining, reach out to Cassandra and Nicole, because this is really, this is a community market, perhaps bridging the gap, hoping to rebuild a really great community committee to run this. But again, they've done outstanding work, and they've, Holly Hill has become a fully, full partner in this, so it's really a community market, but we'd really love to have more community members in the committee.
Okay. Um, maybe, maybe once, since we've approved this, we can get a little piece out in the anchor or on Town and Cohasset Government Facebook page. Okay, next up is our update, post-employment benefits. We have Katie Dugan and Tim Davis, please come up, bring a chair. Your patients are waiting. Name, name and address, just for the record, please.
Tim Davis, two fifty-seven Atlantic Avenue.
Katie Dugan, one hundred Black Rock Road.
And I chair the committee, so I'll just make a couple of remarks. First of all, we've been at this now for about fifteen years. And I want to thank the support we've gotten from a number of both town and volunteers. At the moment, Linda Cole is doing a fabulous job in keeping us going. The current members, I'd like to thank Paul Carlson, Chris Odelson, and Katie Dugan, but particularly and especially Katie Dugan, who has done most of the work that you will be reviewing. We could not be here without Katie. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Katie, and she'll take us through the the annual report. We've got a little bit on OPEB and then a little bit on PEB or on pensions, which we'd like to just review with you, but then that should be it.
Yeah, awesome. And as always, if there's anybody that has an interest, we're down one member, we still have one seat that's been open for a little bit, so if you know any actuaries that are dying for a fun, easy committee to join.
Fun intended.
Exactly. So the first thing we want to do was just give a quick OPEB update, which is the town healthcare liability for both town employees and school retired employees. And this is something we've been doing for roughly five years now, ever since we put in place the funding policy with the assistance of the select board and the advisory committee. So really only good news to report here, we have moved up to twenty-two percent fully funded for our OPEB liability. We've actually, this year, with the help of Linda, found a little bit of benchmarking across all of the towns and cities in Massachusetts, and that puts us about the seventieth percentile in terms of fully funded, so that is great news. A lot of it comes down to the consistency of A, having a policy, and B, following that policy. But we did want to sort of pat our collective backs because we have gotten to that benchmark, and we do have a seven-point-eight million dollar reserve as of June twenty-twenty-four, hopefully investment returns at the beginning, at the end of twenty-twenty-four, we're good, who knows where we're right now, but.
He's ahead of us, I can't imagine.
Exactly, maybe, maybe we'll have some good news in the back half year, but, so, great news there. We are moving forward with funding FY twenty-six. As you know, an annual town meeting out of free cash flow, we're going to put a hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars into the OPEB reserve. That leaves us a balance of a little under four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for special town meeting to meet our fully funded target of five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for FY twenty-six. I know there had been some discussion if there was a lower school deficit, that there could be some additional free cash flow. I don't know if that has come to fruition or not, but I would say that as long as we're comfortable with free cash flow in the fall, we're hopeful that we'll make that target for FY twenty-six. The only other thing that I would sort of note is our next project is to update our investment policy. So we had two policies that we put in place, the funding policy, which kind of drives, obviously, how the the OPEB reserve builds over time. The other piece of it is the investment policy in terms of how those, that seven-point-eight million dollars gets invested. We put in place a policy at the same time as we did the funding policy back in twenty-twenty. We're really looking just to kind of modernize it a little bit. You guys remember there was the Municipal Modernization Act, and as a result, all towns, including Cohasset, now have more stabilization and reserve funds, which is a good thing. But the sort of best practice now is to have a reserve policy for each of the funds individually instead of one co-mingled. So if you take a look at what we have right now, it is a combined cash and investment policy, and it covers basically everything. We did create an appendix for OPEB, but the best practice now is to sort of tease them all out and have standalone policies for each of them. So this is something that we've been collaborating with Linda on, Linda Cole, the town treasurer, and she'll be coming forward with her recommendation on the other reserve policies, and we'll work with her on the OPEB. I don't expect there to be sort of substantive changes, but it is an opportunity for us to sort of revisit, and we've gotten some input from one of the investment managers around some tweaks that they would recommend. So that's, that's sort of our next project as it relates to OPEB, a little bit of cleanup there.
Yeah, just a couple of things about OPEB. I'm sure you all have heard a lot about OPEB and know enough about it, but just to reiterate, OPEB does not come under the same guidelines as the pension plan, the Norfolk County Pension Plan, which we're we're part of. However, they're integrally tied together, and particularly with our plan that we have here. This, our plan for the OPEB, for fully funding OPEB, depends on first fully funding the pensions, and and that's something we'll talk about in just a moment. But the key, as far as I'm concerned, is not how close we are to fully funded, whether we've got twenty-two percent, that's great, but the key is that we have an investment plan, we have a plan, OPEB plan, and we are sticking to that plan. The reason that's key is that our rating agencies look at that, and they give us a favorably favorable rating. I think we're still at triple A, aren't we? Of course, we haven't done anything to go off of triple A yet. So, so that's really the key to the OPEB funding, not the actual date at which we'll be fully funded.
Yeah, and both benefits are our credit rating, but also in in our actuarial assumptions, we get credit for keeping with the funding policy. Should we sort of fall off the bandwagon, we could put at risk our discount rate, which again is like actuarial, actuarial math that currently is benefiting us, that we wouldn't want to lose that benefit. So as Tim alluded, there's sort of another side to this coin, which is the pensions, and the Norfolk County pension system is our pension for town employees does not include teachers. Teachers have their own pension plan through the Mass Teachers Association. So this is just town employees, both public safety and all other employees. And as Tim said, when we put in place the funding policy for OPEB, there were sort of two components to it. There was the annual funding, which is the five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars we're going to put in for FY twenty-six, that increases by three percent annually. And the second component of that was when the Norfolk County pension fully funds, we will no longer have to be making catch-up payments. So right now, in the Norfolk County pension system, we're contributing both the amount that we consider PEGO, which is the amount of the active employees pensions that we're paying, plus a catch-up amount so that we can get to fully funded. When we get to fully funded, which we are much closer at in Norfolk County, we're at seventy-two percent versus twenty-two percent. When we get to fully funded, the funding policy that was written and adopted by the town says that fifty percent of that catch-up payment that we'll no longer have to pay will go into OPEB to get us to fully funded quickly, and the other fifty percent will go to the town as a benefit to our overall budgets. And and the numbers that we're talking about are, you know, roughly about two million dollars a year in annual catch-up payments. So it's, we pay this year or next year, we'll be paying three-point-seven million dollars into our Norfolk County pension, which is both the current portion plus the catch-up portion. When we fully fund it, we'll be able to just pay the current or the PEGO portion of it, and we'll be able to benefit the overall town budget, the tune of roughly two million dollars, part of which will go OPEB, and then part of which will go to the the community budget overall for decisions by you guys. So what we wanted to quickly just update everyone on is that the Norfolk County pension is going through a little bit of a transition in that last year, they changed actuaries, and as a result of the change in actuaries, they did a whole bunch of work to relook at the the base assumptions, and they did what they called experience studies, and there were really two experience studies that they changed major assumptions on. One was mortality tables, and the second was discount rates, and there were a lot of smaller tweaks, but those were sort of the two major ones. So what we experienced last fall was kind of a heads up that actuarially, the liability was going to increase significantly as a result of these changes. So we went from, you know, what was hopefully getting to fully funded by twenty-thirty to no longer be able to hit that target. The conversations with the Norfolk County Retirement Board were rushed in the fall because they their actuarial report was delayed. They have certain deadlines that they have to meet in terms of submitting the the annual payment schedule to PERAC, which is the overall statewide regulatory agency for pensions. So there was a rush discussion in the fall around what our FY twenty-six contributions were going to look like. The net-net of it is that they basically froze discussions until the actuarial report was finished, and we could have a more in-depth conversation amongst all of the pension participants in Norfolk County. So for FY twenty-six, we only are seeing a four-point-five percent increase in our pension from what was a little under three-point-six million to a little over three-point-seven million. So it was a hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase, four-point-five percent is nothing to, you know, in terms of the overall increases that we've seen, we've seen as low as fifty, but we've also seen as high as five hundred thousand dollar year-over-year increases. So we're sort of an average year-over-year increase, but the concern was that we knew that actual assumptions were changing, actual liability was going to go up, and as a result, we're sort of facing an unknown as it relates to not the fiscal year that we're about to appropriate, but FY twenty-seven. So we're, for once, sort of ahead of the game. But we know that there, we we know that we're facing sort of a, an uphill climb, so we're trying to get ahead of it. And so with Chris's leadership back in December, he asked PEB to take a look at what could we do? How could we get organized so that when we get around to the next negotiation, we've kind of got our ducks in a row, and we know what as as a pension system we'd like to see happen. So the first table here is really just some quick highlights of like, what has this liability, this pension liability looked like? And again, it's the two components, both the the current portion of the expense along with the catch-up payment, but you know, from FY twenty, excuse me, FY fourteen to FY twenty-six, it's gone from one-point-four million to three-point-seven million, so it's doubled in a little bit over a decade. And it's unfortunately, if you look at it over time, it's been an eight-point-eight percent compound annual growth rate, which relative to two-and-a-half prop, that's significant. That's a significant change in terms of our ability to stay current with it. And I had already mentioned earlier that the variability is a big piece of this. Some years, it's manageable, it's fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty thousand year-over-year increase this coming year, but in other years, we've seen three five-hundred thousand dollar increases in that same twelve-year period, and those are the years that we really struggle as a community and as a pension system to sort of absorb those changes. And generally, they've been tied to when there's been changes in actuarial assumptions. So that's sort of the overview.
And and it's not negotiable to any rate?
So the, so the actual, so the actual reports are not negotiable. How we spread that catch-up payment is one of the negotiating points. And so that is where the conversation is going to sort of lead us, because the, we are one of twenty members in the Norfolk County pension. We're not, we're not, as usual, Cohasset's not the biggest, we're not the smallest, we're pretty much right in the middle in terms of the size of our contributions to the overall pension system as a town. But we do have a lot of people that have similar, communities that have similar issues. Nobody wants to see this level of variability. No one can absorb, you know, a significant increase over two-and-a-half prop. So while we don't have the ability to sort of negotiate the actuarial liability itself, we do have the ability to negotiate with the Norfolk County pension, how we spread that. The only thing that we bump up against is that unlike OPEB, there are actually mass general law that governs how this liability is being treated. OPEB does not have any legislation around when and how you have to fund it, it's just a liability you have to put on your balance sheet. When it comes to the town pensions, state law requires all pensions statewide to be fully funded by twenty-forty. So we do have a target date that we have to hit, but that target date of twenty-forty, it was twenty-thirty, and then in twenty-ten, after the last sort of financial meltdown, they extended it another decade, so it moved in twenty-ten out to twenty-forty. So we've been operating with this twenty-forty deadline for, you know, close to fifteen years now. And as a result, the overall pensions in the state have actually increased to an average of seventy-five percent fully funded. So it has benefited and lifted all ships within the system. But individual pensions, Norfolk County, control their own destiny in terms of how quickly are they getting to the twenty-forty. Norfolk County, up until now, has been relatively aggressive, and some of the background materials that we provided you guys are fully funded schedules up until now have targeted fully funded by twenty-twenty-nine versus the average for the state is twenty-thirty-three, and PERAC, who sort of oversees guidance for the state overall, has said, we'd like to see current contribution schedules getting to fully funded by twenty-thirty-five. They don't want to let people like bump right up against the statutory deadline because markets fluctuates, they want to give themselves a little bit of cushion, but there's the ability to negotiate sort of the amortization schedule of that unfunded liability from twenty-twenty-nine out to whether it's twenty-thirty-three or twenty-thirty-five, that's.
That's one of the things I just wanted to make clear is that while it's not exactly negotiable per se, Cohasset to the state, it is a much more political situation that we're we're in with the pensions. And what we've done with Chris's help and and Linda's help is we've brought together a number of towns that are in a similar situation than we are, and if you think about it, that fully funded date really is meaningless. I mean, as long as you're making progress and you've got a pension plan that's solid, that final date, and as Katie has said, it's gone all over the, all over the board. So what we're trying to do is to get a plan together with our community in the Norfolk County Pension Fund to come up with a plan that is reasonable in terms of what what the state wants and has a reasonable end date that we're all looking to get to, but that gives the town, particularly Cohasset in this case, some flexibility as it pertains to the budget. So that's really what we're doing. The other thing to keep in mind is the actuarial input on these things is huge. I mean, a one percent, as Katie has pointed out, a one percent change in the discount rate is a huge change in what our pension liability is, and the same thing for medical costs. So, yes.
Could I suggest that for our residents at home, explain what a discount rate in layman's language, just a lot of people.
Think of it as an interest rate.
That's exactly what I'm looking.
Think of it as an interest rate, probably the easiest way to.
And mortality just means people live longer, so you gotta pay pensions longer.
Okay.
Correct, exactly.
All right, so anyway, that's that's where we are with the pensions. It's, I think it's more a political environment that we're dealing in, but we've got some other towns that are in a similar situation that would like to work with us. environment that we're dealing in, uh but we've got some uh other towns that are in a similar situation that would like to work with us. Uh and my sense is that we have the support of uh Patrick O'Connor. So, you know, I think we'll be able to make some progress here.
So um the the second page, just quickly, what we've done since um December. So we did meet with Patrick O'Connor, just sort of um give him a heads up. Um he only has I think Cohasset is literally his only town that's in Norfolk.
Waymouth too.
Uh Waymouth, I believe, has their own. Um they're sort of self-funded, so um they they are not they're in Norfolk County, but they're not in the Norfolk County Pension. So um so we we met with him. Um he arranged a call with the PARAC administrators for us, which was really helpful in terms of just providing some background in information, really getting sort of the top-down perspective of like when they were looking statewide. How did Norfolk County fit into the overall um system of the hundred and five pensions that they manage? The interesting thing coming out of that is actually Norfolk County is relatively, the combined pension is relatively large. That pension system relative to some of the ones that they manage. So as a combined entity, we're actually one of the larger pension systems within Massachusetts, even though Cohasset itself is small, which like for once, we're not the sort of the feisty little Yeah, exactly. So that's, so we are part of a big pension um system uh with twenty other communities. We did have a chance to meet with um Norfolk County administrators and the actuary. Once the actuarial report came out and was public in January, we did that in February. Again, a good conversation. We learned a lot about what the actuarial changes were. We had a good debate around like what could they change in terms of um some of the amortization schedules and other things in terms of how they spread the contributions for those catch-up payments versus um what they've done historically. Um and really, um what Tim was alluding to is the next step, which is building those alliances, making sure we sort of lock down what we'd like to ask so that when we do get the actual report for um this coming, this current fiscal year that we really know exactly how we want to go in and negotiate with Norfolk County. So that brings us to our um next and final slide, which is really what have we identified as the negotiation objectives? So negotiation objective number one is to decrease variability. So we are looking to reduce the unpredictable fluctuations. Some of that will come through locking in on a um conversation around how they're going to amortize the the unfunded liability over the next um fifteen years. Another piece of it will be how do they manage the actuarial assumptions? And I I think the good news is that we took some hard lumps this last cycle with the update in the mortality tables. There are still some areas of risk for us going forward, one being the investment rate of return. Uh we are currently in our actuarial um assumptions for Norfolk County at a much higher investment rate of return of seven point six percent versus the state pensions overall are at seven percent. So we're, the good news is that we've been able to support um with experience at seven point six percent. But as soon as investment returns get soft, which they have, unfortunately, may not be able to support that. So there is a little bit of risk there, but overall, we're trying to decrease variability. Um the second thing that we're looking to do is get Norfolk County Pension Board to agree to extend the amortization schedule of the unfunded li- liability. Twenty twenty-nine was great. You know, Tim and I and OPEB would love to see it fully funded. But we also on the other flip side, like we can't crater the overall town budget. So I think we've now got really good data and a good understanding from both PARAC and from the some of the statewide data we've been able to gather that we don't have to be that aggressive. And so do we push it to twenty thirty-three? Do we push it to twenty thirty-five? We have options. And and pushing it out really does help um substantially in terms of what that um annual increase is going to look like. The other thing that um both Cohasset and other towns have talked about um within the pension system is putting a cap on the annual increases. So your increase is both dependent on the actuarial reports, overall investment returns, but then your own individual profile, whether it's your um number of town employees that you have that are in public safety versus other functions does um contribute to sort of what your overall contribution looks like. And so it can go up year to, it can go up and down year to year. Some towns have seen some really wonky changes, even worse than Cohasset has. And so there's been a discussion of like, we can't go year to year not knowing um whether we're gonna see a, you know, a twelve percent increase or a zero percent increase. So getting a cap that Norfolk County would agree to. Um and then the only other thing to be aware of is that um while the majority of towns are sort of in the same camp as Cohasset, that we, while we would love to see the pension liability fully funded, we also have to balance our our budgets. There are two communities, Canton and Medway, which um actually like the twenty twenty-nine amortization schedule because their their financial plans have been built around the fact that we get to that fully funded. And then in the case of Canton, I think they actually have a big um middle school project. They're trying to build a new middle school. So they're looking to get that payoff so that they can use that for debt debt capacity. So there is a little bit of tension even within the the um members. But hopefully, we'll be able to work through that. And there was some discussion at the February meeting, can we kind of create a two-track scenario? Um and we'll hear what the actuaries in Norfolk County has to say later this year about that. If not, it's gonna have to be a negotiated agreement um that hopefully the later amortization scale uh schedule prevails. So that's where we are right now. And Chris has been fantastic along with Linda in terms of like helping us um sort of build this coalition. I think we're now at the point where we know what we want. Um there are definitely some equally vocal members in Norfolk County that we can rely on to be yeah at the forefront of negotiations. As Tim alluded, it is a political situation. So that's good news in terms of applying pressure. But then there's also some members that are just not very educated. Um and it's it's so part of the job that we'll do between now and when the next actuarial report comes out is educating those communities so that they're sort of onside when we get to um September, October, and we have to sort of really um negotiate what the next um contribution schedule looks like. This past year, it was a single-year contribution schedule, but the more typical is a five or ten-year contribution schedule. That doesn't mean that it's guaranteed for ten years, but the the goal is to create that predictability, not only for PARAC at the state level, but also for the communities in the system. So we'd like to get away from a one-year agreement to a multi-year agreement as part of this. I think that's that's sort of it for now. I mean, I think we'll be coming back um looking for perhaps a letter of support or um some help as we get into sort of the the negotiation portion of this. But we're sort of waiting for the next actuarial shoe to drop before we.
That's what I was, that's what I was gonna ask is, you know, when when the time is right, if if a letter from the board would, you know. I'm sure the board would be more than happy.
I don't have uh great expectations for the uh uh financial situation this year and the, you know, that we're gonna be dealing with. So I think the lot of these numbers will be difficult to uh to deal with, uh but we'll do the best we can. We'll still have a solid plan, that's for sure.
Any questions?
The the only thing would be common is just thank you because with all the work you've done on the OPEB committee and of course with um you know, the finance and town hall staff, by reaching out and going with the other towns and and uh speaking up, talking with the state senator and doing all the meetings, you've you've found uh some, not only some common ground, but some uh potential areas that uh that that of negotiation that Cohasset could get to that we would never have gotten to in the beginning. We would have just been handed a bill and said, no. So I think it's it's changed the whole track of everything uh regarding OPEB for the county and and how it's going to be distributed and what they're gonna be thinking about it, how they're doing that. So there's a lot of things on the table that just wouldn't have been there without the work that you provided. So thank you very much on behalf of town.
We know the train is coming. We're trying to stop it well in advance.
Thank you. You've done an incredible job. I worked with you on the uh zoning, planning. Uh Katie, you were just remarkable. And Tim, you've carried the flag on this when nobody else would. Got a lot of help. But but really, thank you because, you know, some of these nuts and bolts of of how a town organization holds together and is managed is so crucial and it's dull. And thank you for the work that you've done. Oh, well, I'm I worked with you and I know, I could see your eyes and just lighting up. Can I talk about this one? But anyway, again, thank you very, very much. The town owes you a great debt.
Mr. Grady.
Yes, thank you so much.
Mr. Flex.
Uh just briefly, so in my short time on the select board, you two have done a great job of teaching us all to be disciplined about putting money into the pension funds, which has been great guidance. Uh Tim, it sounds like the guidepost at this point is keep making progress without breaking the bank. Do I have that about right? So even if we're trying to soften the arrival of the train, we're still gonna be making progress.
Oh, yes.
That's the guide.
Absolutely. Really, the key here for me is uh as far as OPEB is concerned, is to stick with the plan that we've all approved over the last fifteen years. As Katie alluded to, if the rating agencies start seeing a slip, then we're gonna be in trouble. And the, to some extent, the pensions are in the same boat, although again, that's more political. We have some maneuvering we're gonna have to do. We'd get some, bring in some others under the tent so that uh there's a lot of, a lot of places we can move with that, though, that are not gonna hurt the state. And will help the towns like Cohasset.
We're also much closer when it comes to the pension. I mean, we're at seventy-two percent right now, fully funded. And so we're in that so close.
And that was actually my other question. The seventy-two percent, that's a Cohasset-specific number. Other towns are not as fully funded?
So um so this, so seventy-two percent for the pension is um Norfolk County pension. So it, all of us, all twenty of us in Norfolk as a collective are at seventy-two percent. The state overall, um all hundred and five state pensions are at seventy-five percent as a median. There are, I think, five that are fully funded and there are another fifteen that are ninety percent and above funded. But we're we're right in the hunt. You know, Norfolk County, which we participate in, is right in the hunt. Um and it, and if you look back, um I I was looking for the number before I came in here. But if you look back at two thousand sixteen, which I think is the earliest that I started paying attention, you know, we were mid-sixties. So we've gone from like mid-sixties to seventy-two percent in, you know, a decade. So in another decade, another ten or fifteen years. Unfortunately, right now, the state has us getting to fully funded by twenty forty. So we've got fifteen more years to get there. Can we get there? Probably. But as Tim said, it's also political. So they 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 could absolutely move the stakes out a little bit as we get closer, depending on where things actually land.
But they probably in the markets will cooperate.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Thank you both. Um let us know when you need some some support. We'll see you at town meeting. I'm sure you'll give your
Moderator allows it, I will.
Of course, of course. And um to answer your, you opened with um free cash. We have, as you know, in the warrant, we do have a an amount in for the schools to close the gap for this current fiscal year for the schools. We're not gonna know till we know, which will be at the end when they close the books on on fiscal year. So whatever. We we think it's gonna be less than that amount.
Okay.
Chris hedged hedged on the number that the superintendent provided and then, of course, a new load of free cash.
So hopefully be a little bit of an incremental cushion to what we have in terms of free cash. Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is our FY twenty twenty-five third quarter financial update. Mr. Senior, thank you for the memo.
So you all received a memo and a few spreadsheets. It's very small, I apologize. I was trying to print on a little paper. So this is just a little little budget history for twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Which I'll plug in there. So um we're three quarters of the uh through the year and we're right on target right now. So the general fund's doing okay. Our tax collections are right on. Our excise taxes are actually about to exceed our budget, which is great. The uh, I'm just checking commitments on motor vehicles, so they're right on target. And our meals and our meals and room expenses are really running low. And we're just entering the outdoor dining season, so fingers crossed we continue to sustain a really strong growth on that. And then, you know, otherwise our expenses, schools run a little behind because they they run, you know, they they actually pay them through August through June for a lot of teachers. So uh they they pick up a lot of costs at the very end.
Right.
So.
Because they get, they get all the checks.
Right, they get all the checks for the summer. A five expense, but it 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 wasn't. Uh but but otherwise, we're again, much right on target. Uh and then the other, the other big tweak, you know, I think the thing that's doing really well is our investment account. It's mostly um just interest. Our treasurer partners are a really good job of making sure that we're getting the interest in our bank accounts. As you, as you know, even on the private side, you can find the account for less than one percent and find one for four percent. So she's doing a really good job of making sure we're getting the interest returns, which just means we have, you know, more funding. So that's the uh, that's the overall, the general fund.
Yes, please. Um so on the, on the local receipts, the licenses and permits, forty-four hundred? It it it's behind. Can you just give a?
Well, i- it's.
It's at eighty percent or seventy-five percent through the
Yes, it's a little ahead.
So it's, so it's a little ahead relative to the other budget.
So that, yeah, well, that that includes, so so that's includes the the, you know, the stickers, which are always a lag.
Okay, all right.
We don't, we don't get those until the big s- big sales are really marching behind, I'm sorry. So that relaxes.
Okay.
But the others are, again, pretty good. Um but again, it's only three quarters of the year and we're at a hundred and eighty percent of our local receipts. And we try to build it so we're a little more comfortable. These are variable expenses, right, building permits, excise taxes.
Right.
So you wanna make sure that there's any questions. Property taxes pretty much go up to a hundred percent of the year, so we should be on target with that.
Are there any questions on the general fund, on the uh the local receipts or the revenue and expenditure sheet that um was in our packet? I mean, our revenues are ahead slightly and and our expenses are right on target, it looks like. So no questions? Okay.
I'll switch to, I'll go with Sewer next. Um they're um pretty much on target too. The one thing that's lagging a little bit there is the betterment receipts. And I think that that's just a timing thing, the way that people pay them. I have to go double-check with the treasurer clerk to earn a collection. Otherwise, they're uh they're actually used revenues up a little bit. Kind of apparel and water, which doesn't always happen. Uh because um a lot of people have, you know, irrigation meters, which don't count against sewers. So but again, we're coming into the, we're heavily, again, it's right now, right? So we're coming into the more That said, Sewer also has some new connections, right, in the United States. Uh they have the St. John Plaza. So they're, they're, they have a few more customers they used to have. So that should continue to generate a little bit more of an increase in usage. And they also have ongoing payments that are coming from both those complexes over the next number of years. So that's an extra money coming in as they defer buying payments. They seem to be in decent shape. Sewer.
Can you talk a little bit about the Little Harbor Betterments? I mean, that's
I have to, I have to find out why there's, I think it's a tiny, I think most of them are just paid later in the year. So and and it's also possible that our account hasn't caught up with some of the
Okay. Because everything else seems, you know, relatively in line and this this is just concerning.
Yeah, those aren't really monthly paid. So I saw that too.
Do they go with the tax bills?
Yeah, I I I think they're, I think they're paid off-cycle, so but I have to double-check.
Okay. It's just concerning. It's a half million dollar.
And as I said, I also know that there's And as I said, I also know that there's there's, some people do prepay from time to time and that goes into our fund. So, um, we do have, there's a very large amount of money set aside, which I know we're starting there. And, and, um, I don't think it should be wrapped in a place or something. Um, there's a, there's a, um, there's millions, there's been millions of dollars put aside for paid and, and we should pay off the balance. The payments start to accelerate at the end.
Okay.
I will double check the spreadsheets on that.
Okay.
Um, in the next cycle, so.
And so just um, oh, I'm sorry. You can go on to water and then I'll ask my question because it impacts both.
So what it actually also doing, well, they're actually getting ahead on usage and that's, and that's in the winter. So, um, some of that is also they have some more customers. Um, and, uh, you know, the other reality is since the pandemic, there are some people in town on a regular basis. They're just, just over. So we're going to use it to spike up a little bit. So, um, again, not, not dramatically, but, uh, we have plenty of water. So, um, the, and again, you see the snow and churches being, or anything when there are operated homes, you see them time to time. That means more bathrooms and fixtures. Um, and, um, we have, and we still have the one plus to come online and of course the, a solid property. So those haven't really been fully, actually I don't really have, but they're hardly, I can probably, one plus is not, I can accept that first. So then again, water is, is also doing, doing well. Um, and they're coming up to the end of their, their late cycle periods. So they're probably going to be doing it another one fairly soon, depending on the next five plus years. Um, now on, on, on water and sewer, um, there are big infrastructure issues with both of them. So I'll mention them in a minute. So, um, we, we need to schedule a meeting on our agenda probably in June, uh, having Brian come in and talk about the NWR, the NWR regional water study.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, and where that might go. And also what the assessments are on the plan and the needs for the plan, the future of the plan. And, um, with sewer, we want to grant, we should do a whole capital assessment. So that's on the um, so we should be getting there sometime. I think this late spring or summer, uh, because it's going to be some of that specific to. Plus, we also need to explain it very preliminarily. Um, with Hall, just engaging in the conversation because we have an agreement with him for, for the North Cohasset District. Um, they have, also they have passed it. So something we need to, we still have a few years before, before it ends, but we need to start having those conversations.
Okay.
And then of course, as Tim alluded to and a few others, you know, the, the national economic climate, little factors, how that is, I can't say. Um, the grant, the uncertainty on grants are very, you know, we already saw it went through the St. Harbor, um, that stabilized. It could still change. Um, so we're not so much a direct recipient of many of these grants, uh, though we do get some. Um, the schools don't, aren't quite, don't, aren't eligible for a lot of them anyway. Um, that said, the state isn't, they're not a lot of funding. Think of the transportation. And we're kind of past the recipient. So we have to see how it's going to affect us. Obviously, you know, the, the pipeline alignment or the sign more bridge replacements suddenly, you know, sideways. Um, there's going to be a great strain on the state's resources. So it may end up impacting things. That said, the, the governor's completely very large fifty percent increase of chapter ninety. So if anything, you want to send an email off to our legislators saying they should vote for that, please do. Um, that is something we, that is, we've all been espoused to look for for a very long time. So that kind of increase rate, it's like the road cost will certainly obtain. So interestingly, the price of oil has, has actually come down a little bit. And that will certainly affect the price of assets. See, we'll see if that helps at all. So, um, so that's what we are on fiscal. I think I also sent, so what, what I gave to you also, uh, and it's this one sheet, again, I apologize for the small size.
If you print it portrait.
But it's going to be multiple pages, so.
Yep. I'll teach you. You pick columns to the page and it'll look fit, but.
So I, I tried it in my, my very limited way. So.
Yep.
Uh, so our FTE count expected for twenty-six is a hundred and eighty and a half. It's a half because, uh, for example, I should say just on full time, um, and there's a couple of positions that were split between the departments, um, which is actually down from a hundred twenty-one, which were in the, the shoes budget. Uh, and in fact, I had to double check initially. I'm not double counting the SROs because they're in the police department. And so I think I had them separated. I should have double checked initially. Um, so, and we really haven't had any increases. And the reason uh, for the drop is we're, we're shifting folks to, uh, to RISF, hopefully, when the RTI factor down. Some of the substitutions are shifted.
So hundred nineteen point five.
Spread out across. The single biggest concentration obviously is public safety.
Right.
So forty, forty, forty-eight of our positions of that, uh, let's just be close. Not quite.
Thirty-five percent.
Yeah, i- is in public safety. And then the next biggest departments, uh, education, public authorities, facilities, and the rest are in research.
Yeah.
Um, but right, that's pretty much. The library is the next biggest one. Again, there have been six or seven days of meetings that they're probably and records lots and lots of part timers. We don't count.
Right. Well, and they're, and they're seasonal.
Yeah, we only have, it's only, there, there's two full timers on the budget. There's a third that's covered.
Yeah. And it's, we don't cover, we don't count seasonal harbor masters. We don't count seasonal police force.
Yeah, there's, there are special officers, they don't, I mean, uh, what's included in that number, there are a couple of, we have full time, we do have one full time. I wish it was split between, was it fired? And she sits in the police department for us two.
So, so it's a one, it's a one point oh.
It's.
Yep.
Which has been incredibly useful. And that's, that's, it's caught them all along on there, all the levels for the details. It's just been doing a great job. Don't believe it's a tactic. I think he's on, he doesn't have to do his own payments anymore. And read that some of them.
So, um, Mr. Flex, any comments or questions?
No, my only comment is that I was driving around last weekend. I saw all the towns with overrides and conflicts over the overrides. We have that. So thank you. Appreciate this call, guidance that you provided.
Mr. Grady.
Just said the same thing. Um, hearing a lot of towns with overrides and people turning them down, the towns in disarray. We're coming through this year all right. You know, we've got our shortfalls, but we're doing okay. So thank you.
Good. Mr. Frog.
I'll be the third to be in rate. I, I jumped on that DM wagon first, but that's, that's certainly fine. I would certainly, I would say that the, um, the, the budget is most certainly sober and sensible. And, and that keeping it on that track and working with the other committees and the school committee and advisory and the like, as well as the town hall staff, I think, I think it's kept a, a steady hand, uh, that, that's kept us for the budget that's livable. Uh, and certainly something that we can all, we can all deal with. And I would, I'm just re-read the same thing that Mr. Plex did is that, is that the other towns, we, you can just read the paper and see where they are and they're in, they're, they're in total disarray with wild, you know, gyrations of what's going to potentially be in an override or not be in an override. And, and when it doesn't, that means you're, you're cutting staff. So, um, by doing this, this, by, by just sort of keeping us afloat, going in the right direction on this, it really puts Cohasset ahead in so many ways, uh, with all the services that the people get in this town, whether it's on the town side or on the school side. It's, it's really helpful towards that end. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Grady.
Uh, yeah. By the way, um, I'm glad we have this on the agenda. Uh, I've been requesting for quite a number of years. Uh, a full disclosure of all the classifications, the number of employees, compensation and staffing organizational. Um, and I put together something which, um, that I've made arrangements and you can hand it to my other select board members. And these are just some ideas. We're running a twenty million dollar plus organization. Um, anybody who's worked in public, uh, in human resources know that you have an organizational chart. You have, similar to what Duxbury has just done. You show what the compensation is, people are getting compensation. Um, and, and have a reasonable understanding of the qualifications required. And I think it's, it's long past that we had a, a full study of the number of employees by year. And I think we want to go back ten years or a long period of time because we want to see if there's a trend. We saw in the PEB um, discussion that long-term financial trends are important. And we want to be able to, and it's not just a select board, but it's the people who are paying the bills. This, the, um, taxpayers. We want to be able to see what's going on, the number of contractors, where they're working. Are they working in town hall? Are they working in another facility? Um, the hire date, the location of the work desk, compensation level, percent of remote work, the value and cost of the benefits. And these are all basic fundamental things that I think the citizens um, um, are entitled to. It also makes it possible for those of us who are in government to understand, is there a bunch of turnover? Are people not staying long? How many new employees that have to be trained? How many people left? And sometimes you'll see, is there a pattern of, you know, employment practices that perhaps could be improved upon? Um, are there open unfilled positions? What is the effect? Maybe we don't need to fund that position anymore. Or maybe we're asking employees to do more than they can reasonably be expected to do. And that can clearly result in, in sub, subpar performance. So I would just suggest that it's long, it's long past time for Cohasset to have a comprehensive, comprehensive study, similar to the one that Duxbury just did. So we have this information and it's also important for people who are paying the bills to have something that's easy for them to understand, see where their money is going and understand. Town government is mostly uh, personnel comps. So I don't think it's unreasonable. And, and I think the position should be, uh, these questions should be dealt with and they should be dealt with very soon because I think the taxpayers in Cohasset are, um, entitled to that level of good government. Thank you.
Well, I.
Ye- yes.
I, I see. And give me if I'm wrong. I went down to town hall and give me a second. I'm so busy. And what I've got. And I did ask, I have starting basically ten years of town reports that has salaries, positions, termination date. That's a personal thing. And that's, I don't think that we.
It's not our business.
It's none of our business sometimes. But location of work desk, um, I think we could all find that out all due to ask, but it's got the salaries. It's got the changes, got the gross compensation year by year, number of employees, contractors, type of, you know, especially, I would, Jack, I just wanted to go through these ten years of reports like I did. By all means, you can take them.
Well, I think that's a great idea. Can you summarize the average?
No.
Termination.
No, Jeff, because I'm not a secretary. So I'm going to let, I'm going to let you summarize them. So I'm offering it to you.
I'm not a secretary either.
You asked for those.
May I finish?
No, you can't.
Of course.
I'm not done yet. You asked for, uh, then after.
I, I'm asking for that. And I said it could be.
You have right there. You have ten years worth of town reports. I thought that you might sit down and enjoy them. Um, I mean, I read through them. I saw the salaries. I don't know what you're expecting. They're right there next to you.
I'm expecting reasonable, good government. And I'm expecting that type of work should be done by this town staff. And I think it's an insult to the citizens and taxpayers that their legitimate requests, and this is not just for me, are treated in such a cavalier manner. And I think you owe an apology to the people who've worked hard for many, many years in this town government, much earlier than you ever did. And, and I'm very disappointed in you, Mr. Grady. I would have thought better.
Okay.
Why are you saying that? I'm saying I went down, I looked at salaries and I just thought I'd share, I'd share with the board. But it is accessible to the town, Jack. And so I'm sorry you're disappointed in that, that it is open and we run an open government here. And so I, um, went down and did that so that anybody is free to go and access any one of those reports, sit down and ask those questions with the town manager, the personnel director. So I don't understand the disappointment. I'm sorry you feel that way. But we were trying to address your concerns. And I was interested myself, so I did it.
Okay.
I, I just had one thing on this, I made.
Yes.
Um, back in the fall, I originally talked about, uh, doing a, a classification compensation study, but it's a little bit different than I think what Jack had. And what it is, is, is to, I wasn't going to bring it up because I wanted to bring it up kind of post-budget because I wanted to get through the budget season and the things we had enough on the plate to deal with. So it was going to be after that. But since it's here, the, the Cliff Notes is that you, you do that so that the positions that you have, and then when you go to rehire those positions, when the people leave, you have the basis of what those positions actually are. It's the foundation for any HR. Now, we have never done one. We never had really an HR department for many, many years. And we, we now do, uh, as it's starting to get developed. But that's something that is a foundation we, we should have. Um, of what the position is, what it, what, what's not just the job description. See, the job description comes from that. It, it's, it's not the other way around. But, but so I, I would say post-budget, post that, maybe we could talk about that and what might be involved with it, um, with the HR department and what something like that would cost. But that's what you do in order to give the basis for what your job descriptions are. And then also they, they interview the employees to say, you know, within your job, beyond what your job description is, what are you actually doing? And, you know, is there anything, are you doing anything policy wise? Are you lifting things? How much are you lifting? And so that gets all put into there. And, and there's information I'm sure that we do not have that the employees are doing, uh, work that is, is beyond their job descriptions as well. So that, that was my encapsulation of what the classification should be, uh, for HR thing. But as I said, I didn't even want to bring it up to last for the budget season, but it was brought up tonight. So I, I throw it out there. That's.
Okay. So, you know, a couple of things regarding, you know, the longstanding request to have, you know, an employee count. Um, it was voted down four to one by the previous select board that Mr. Creighton sat on. And we also voted down four to one for having our town manager spend time putting together information, as Mr. Grady said, was readily available. We did have a presentation from Megan James from, um, the, uh, our director of human resources, and she does have, um, compensation and grids. I'm looking at the wage scales right now for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine different, um, bargaining groups. We did talk about, do we want to spend the thirty-seven thousand or whatever, however much money it was to have Duxbury do a report. Meg presented, I thought articulated pretty clearly exactly how she goes through the process of hiring. Um, and, and how, you know, classification and compensation are, are outlined. Um, and we received tonight with the budget, which the budget is fifty-six million. It's not twenty million. Um, we did receive an FTE count, which will be ongoing, um, in regards to, you know, people's jobs and their descriptions. We're the select board. We're not the HR department. We're not the COO of the town or the CFO of the town responsible for determining if someone's, you know, working outside their job description, working inside their job description, has enough to do, doesn't have enough to do, leaves the town, um, doesn't leave the town, gets hired. It, it's not, it's not real within our purview because we all, you know, th- this, this is a, a, a part-time job, um, for, for us at the table. Um, and we have professionals that we entrust to, to do the job. And with respect to people in the town, um, full transparency, they have the exact same exposure to the town reports, to this meeting, to ask for any of the documents that get presented as tonight. Um, we have our budget with, and with the, um, the document Mr. Senior handed out with the FTE count, which I believe we've reviewed before. So there, there's, the information is, is available for those who want it. I think people want to know that they get services that they think they're paying for, um, and that they can get a question answered when they have one. So that, um, my two questions to Mr. Senior on the budget were, um, will you forward the water and sewer reports to the respective commissions?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then I have a note to put water and sewer capital requests on a future agenda. Is that what you asked?
Yeah, we, we need to get the reports on the NWR.
Yep.
Regional study.
Yep.
Uh, and what the next steps are. And also when the sewer capital analysis is done. Where they will come.
Okay.
Because it, both can be various. The word is the, I think the word, the one is teed up first.
Okay.
That's actually ready to go.
Okay.
Sometime in June.
Well, I'd like to comment on some of these, these comments. Um, at least we're talking about it. Taken a lot of, um, questions on my part, um, I guess, four to one. I'm aware of that. I'm aware of that. That's what the issue's been. Um, and I'm glad that now this is out in the open, so it can't be swept under the, under the rug, and it can't be de-minimized, and you're not sending select board members down into ar- archives to go through, uh, fifteen, twenty-pound boxes of records, and saying that's what you do as a select, select board. Although, perhaps, well, I, that would have been an unkind thing to say, about highest and best use. But this is what the type of fundamental openness and transparency, which is an ongoing obligation of elected officials, and it's something that I have always spoken out for. I've had tremendous support. And it's one of those things that unless you keep asking and looking for that, because sunlight and transparency is the best way to have good government. And I stand for good government, I champion good government, and I am more than welcome to come over, over here and, and find this kind of opposition, because you know what? Tell me I'm asking the right questions, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Madam Chairman, that's good.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Chair, Chair won't.
Yes, town manager update.
So, uh, the greatest day of local democracy is upon us on Monday. Right now, I hope all, everyone at town has gotten their wine, it's coming to me, it's not junk mail, it's a town seal, let's keep it. Uh, there are some extras available at the meeting, but it's great if you can bring this with you, um, there's eighteen articles, um, uh, only about fourteen, fourteen of them are gonna take any substance that night, a couple are gonna be deferred. Um, and there's a reports that will come in, so the annual town reports are on the website, if you want to go to the town website, you can look at all the articles and backup, we have links to the community preservation and the, uh, capital items, so if you want to learn a little bit more about the applications, those are all up there. There's a TV show, which I was able to film, we do that every year with the chair and advisory and select board. Um, that's on one four three, I think. Um, so, if people want to deep dive a little bit towards the warrant, jump right in. Uh, and also, anyone who wants to really deep dive, uh, the, the, the meetings, the select board, advisory, capo, school committee, all online. So you can go to the town's YouTube page and watch if your heart's content. Uh, any of the meetings have lots of great discussions. The warrant doesn't just happen, it takes months and months, uh, it's, it's amazing the amount of volunteer time that comes from this community. Uh, it's been an incredible pleasure to work alongside all the committees these last many months. Uh, and the warrant is a culmination of budget, the capital plan, the community preservation funds, great stuff. Um, following up on that, the second half of town meeting is the town election, that'll be next Saturday, the seventeenth. So, Monday, the twelfth, seven PM is the, uh, town meeting. Uh, the election is Saturday, the seventeenth, that'll be at the Deer Hill School, from eight to six, at the auditorium. Uh, so, again, um, that's all, uh, the, if, if people want to vote in person i- i- early, they can come to town hall next week and do that, uh, each day during the week. You can also do early voting, absentee, and you can make an application. So, there's plenty of opportunities to vote, including that whole day of September. Those are the two big things I want to update everybody on, and, uh, the quick update of the cell tower. Uh, so, there's been an ongoing conversations, uh, about the lack of cell service in the north corner of, as a whole northern tier. Um, and, uh, where we are at this point after the town meeting vote and the legislation, the, the legislature is the final design process. Um, the impact in Wheelwright, uh, will be less than an acre. And about thirty trees are all, we're talking about impacting at this point, and the plan is to kind of replace them at other places in town, I don't think the right park needs thirty trees in that immediate area. Um, the apartment will be filed with cons- with conservation, uh, that'll be coming soon, the applicant for the tower itself will be doing that for the town. Um, one of the things we've been talking about, we've done onsite, some people tour, if any of the members want to go in there, we can set them to. Um, there's gonna be a, a little weather balloon type thing floated at some point when the weather's a little bit better, uh, to, to give, and to, to give some idea of what the plant's kind of back in the woods, so we shouldn't be on a territory. Um, and the other piece of this is that we're finalizing the, we'll exposita property of the town halls, which should be the swap land. Uh, that'll be more than, uh, an acre. We're trying to carve out a piece that's right along the front end, to be able to make a public park, and have the open space to be involved, and obviously, it's like, we're not approved on this. Uh, maybe a community garden, or at least some trails that'll connect with Conservation Trust, hold slide on both sides. So, um, uh, that is ongoing, so we're, 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 we have a producer that's coming in to do work on that. We'll have to get the, uh, finding the word, or at least the assessment, I think the assessment is be fine with the subdivision lines, and then we'll come in front of the select board like this. That's, uh, that's my update.
Great, thank you.
If I may comment that, um, thank you on the cell tower, because the, the town meeting had already approved, you know, different aspects of it, and it's just very important to the town. And I think if there's anybody out there, um, who's wondering why you're putting it in a park, well, we've had, uh, not only here in Cohasset, in, in Wheelwright Park, where they were testing radars along the go with Norfolk Conveyor. Um, a lot of cell equipment and communications equipment is put in public parks, and if you look at the state level, you go up to the Blue Hills, the WGBH Tower, which almost all of your radio stations come on, and WGBH comes on, and the, and the TV stations is, is in the Blue Hills. Um, all over the state, they have fire towers with communications equipment, not only for police, fire, secret service and otherwise, but also for your cell service, your T-Mobiles and Verizons and people like that, so it's not certainly out of bounds to have it, uh, i- i- in a, in a park, it's, that, that's usually the one of the better places to have it, because it's not in the middle of the neighborhood, and it's not, you know, it's you're biding people's, uh, properties, so. This is a very important to the town, and hopefully to get that cell service down to that end of town. I, I know the people, I'm sure, are looking forward to actually having that, uh, you know, down by Rocky Beach, Truston Road in Atlantic Ave, so. Uh, long time coming.
Right, um. Okay, so, next, uh, select board comments, Mr. Plex.
Nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Mr. Grady.
Just to brief, um, just want to say I'm excited for town meeting. Um, I'm looking forward to continuing to find work we started in the last couple of years. Building up and improving on our roads and sidewalks. Finally, after many years, getting town hall up and running, and working with our town hall. Fantastic, to, in getting it up off the ground, making it a place that's conducive to um, safety, comfort, and a place where both town can go, getting the auditorium reopened, these are my hopes. Uh, reprogram it to start making some history there again. And, um, just the progress this town has made in the last few years, done a heck of a job, so I'm looking forward to seeing it continue.
Thank you, Mr. Creighton.
Okay. Yeah, I, I was just gonna bring up, um, this Saturday, I guess many people know that there was a tragedy in town with, um, you know, a truck, you know, tracks, and it was about eleven twenty when I was actually in my kitchen, when I heard the accident happen. Uh, and I heard the boom, and then the, the, the crashing of glass, and then I went outside, I, I originally thought that something was put on the tracks that the, the train had hit. Um, but unfortunately, my surprise, when I came outside, I saw a truck, which looked more like a car by the time uh, I got out there, and then the, and the, the force that hit was unbelievable. Uh, but with that being said, before I could even dial nine one one, both our police and the fire department was there. So, as, as much time as it took me to walk downstairs and, and go see what was going on, the police and fire department was already there at the scene. Um, and so it's a terrible tragedy that happened, and I would like to beiterate, um, you know, the posts that Chief Quigley put on there, uh, regarding that, you know, it still isn't under, it's still under investigation, we don't know the full cause of it. And so, uh, online, if people could keep their comments, uh, within the boundaries of that, that would be very helpful. Uh, but again, thank you to the police and fire departments, because, uh, they did a yeoman's job to be there as fast as possible to try and rectify the situation as best they could and do everything that they could. Uh, but unfortunately, it, it, I was not there to do that. So, thank you, and my condolences go, uh, to the family in Cohasset. For the victims of it, thank you.
Mr. Creighton.
Yeah, um. This is my fin- final select board meeting, it's bittersweet, but I'm not sure how much I'll miss it a lot. But before I talk about that, John Cannery, gentleman who was killed.
Can, his name's Canny.
He's a very good friend of mine, and his, um, wife is a best friend of my, uh, my wife's. Um, John was a very brilliant financial analyst. He did a lot of behind-the-scenes, uh, financial work for the town and committees over the years. We, uh, our community is less with John not with us. And I think we should all remember in the coming months that Barbara could certainly use our support. So, I'm, I'm gonna miss John. As far as, this is, I've been in town government, I was on conservation, I was on various committees, I was chair of conservation. Put into effect in conservation term limits, which I believe in, which is why I'm not chose not to run for reelection, I think two times is, is, uh, more than enough. Um. There's a certain honor that's bestowed upon the voters when they elect you to, um, any position, or you're appointed to any position. It's not your power, it's the power of the people and the government. Um, that we are so fortunate to be the beneficiary. Um, and you know, if you go over to one of our churches, you could look at a pulpit in which the Declaration of Independence was, was spoken from the pulpit. It's a very, very special uh, trust that we have. And those of us who are honored to be in um, some form of public service, how grand juris, minor it is, should always remember that. And it's not our power, it's the power of the people. And we owe an obligation transparency. We owe an on, uh, obligation for good dealing, for keeping our word. Um, and when we act that way, we show our, we show our fellow citizens that there is honor in public service, and hopefully more of them will choose to become more active. So, thank you to the town of Cohasset, and thank you to all my supporters over the years who have supported me. Um, and I hope that I have showed honor and dignity in honoring your support. If we're so lucky to be in this country, in a town like Cohasset, and God bless America, and God bless the town of Cohasset, and God bless each and every one of the citizens of our fine little town, and thank you.
Thank you, so, um, town meeting is, um, as we've discussed, it's Monday night, we are posted for six forty-five roll call. Um, and to, we'll have fifteen minutes before town meeting starts, or before the quorum gets there, just to review any last-minute things that might pop up. Um, some of us are speaking on certain articles, I'd like to suggest that we all prepare our comments so that we can be, um, concise and to the point, um, for our articles. Um, and, uh, Mr. Creighton, thank you for your six years of service on the Cohasset Select Board. Um, so with that being said, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. So, the first two sets were joint meetings, one with, uh, capital budget, and one, um, on February twenty-fourth, and one with, um, CPC on March twenty-fourth. Just Tracy on the capital budget. Yeah, just change the top right-hand corner, okay, thank you. Thank you, so, um. Are there any comments, uh, corrections, motions to change, anything in any of the minutes for February twenty-fourth, March twenty-fourth, or April twenty-ninth? No, okay, um, so can I have a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, February twenty-fourth?
We're moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Your motion to approve minutes of Monday, March twenty-fourth?
We're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve minutes of Tuesday, April twenty-ninth?
We're moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, um, we don't have any topics not reasonably anticipated, so at nine twenty PM, can I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second, second. I'm out.
Okay, we'll let Mr. Creighton move it.
My favorite part of public service, motion to adjourn.
And, um, Mr. Plex seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.